Okay, I think we'll take our three o'clock break. Oh, here we are. I think we're live.
So to confirm, Mayor Savage, we are live.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. This is our first council meeting by Zoom, so we welcome everybody. And we hope this makes it easier for people to take part as well. It's March 23rd and we're here for our council meeting. And I am going to I am going to introduce each of our councillors and have them come on and let us know that they're alive and well. Councillor Dagel Gammon in the tree.
Good afternoon, Mayor Savage and fellow colleagues. This is the beautiful hundred-plus-year-old tree that is behind the baseball field in Myers Grant. So if you want to have a beautiful little walk, come see an amazing tree, have a picnic in Myers Grant with us all.
Beautiful. Thank you, councillor Hensby. How are you?
Just fine there, Mr. Mayor, and the eastern shore is full of trees and lots of sea to see. So come on down anytime. There's beautiful weather on the eastern shore.
Thank you. Will do. Councillor Kent, District Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My puppies and I are saying we are here, ready to do some work. Someone I think has come to my door at the exact moment that my mic went on, so I'll leave it at that.
Awesome. Councillor Purdy in Cole Harbour.
Good morning. Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to be here from District Four.
All right. Councillor Austin from downtown Dartmouth.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Ready to go.
Beautiful. Councillor Mancini, District, beautiful District Six. Was that a palm tree behind you?
It is. I heard the theme.
Well, I lost you there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, it's the theme of trees today. My sister from Cape Breton, Kathy had her tree, so I dug out in Shewby Park. Only two palm trees and all of HRM councillor Austin has the other one. So good afternoon, everyone. Ready to go.
Beautiful. We'll bridge over to councillor Mason.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and colleagues on this beautiful sunny Tuesday. I'm sure we're all sad to be indoors. Later on, I may move to participate in the meeting from my deck when it gets just a little warmer. Good to see y'all.
All right. Councillor Smith, how are you?
I'm great, Mr. Mayor, colleagues. I approve that message. Councillor Mason, sounds like a great idea. Looking forward to the meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Cleary among the hordes of people. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship. So actually, behind me, this is for all the 54% of the Conservative Party of Canada. Just in case you weren't aware that climate change was real, this is Chocolate Lake circa 1970-71, and people skating roughly this time of year on Chocolate Lake.
Wow. All right. Okay, councillor Morris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. Behind me is the intersection of Main and Titus, which is the subject of one of the themes we're going to be discussing this afternoon.
All right. Councillor Cuddle, how are you?
I'm well, Mr. Mayor. I'm reporting from, I'm in the house this afternoon here at City Hall, representing District 11, which is Spryfield, Sambro Loop and Prospect Road.
Beautiful. Councillor Stoddard, how are you doing?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, coming to you from beautiful Timberley, Lakeside, Beechville, Clayton Park West and Wedgewood, although it does look like I'm standing in front of City Hall.
Councillor Lovelace, how are you doing? District 13.
Good afternoon. I am coming to you live from City Hall this morning and also wishing I was outside because it looks like it's 12 degrees out there, but looking forward to working with you all today. Thank you.
Awesome. Councillor Blackburn from Beaverbank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and we got all kinds of trees in Beaverbank, but I don't have them in my background today. The most I can offer is an autographed John Cleese poster, so we'll have to, we'll have to go with that. Good afternoon, everybody, and just wanted to shout out to the Beaverbank Lions Club. Thank you for helping a family in need who was burned out of their home last week, and donations are being accepted through a bottle drive at Fader's Bottle Exchange in Lower Sackville. Thank you.
Beautiful. Good luck to them. Councillor Russell.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here from sunny Sackville this afternoon. I just wanted to mention that this is the 100th anniversary. 2021 is the 100th anniversary of the Blue Nose. This is the original Blue Nose, not the Blue Nose Two or 2.1. And so there is a virtual event happening on Friday hosted by the Canadian Mint in honor of this ship. My family had a lot to do with the development and the launching of the Blue Nose Two. And so I'm especially interested in seeing this there. So have a great day, everybody, and we'll talk to you in a bit.
All right. Deputy Mayor, how are you?
I am well and sunny Bedford Wentworth here, Mr. Mayor. Looking forward to this afternoon's meeting.
Beautiful. Jacques de Bay, you're with us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Here on the counter for him, ready to have a great meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacques. Jacques is raising money, as you will all have seen, for cancer. He's taking part in the big fundraiser this year, so I'll pay attention to that. And our lawyer, John Treves. Show your face, Johnny.
I figured I had to turn it off. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Ready to go.
All right. Okay. Just before we go, I don't really pay much attention to politics since I got out of it and intermunicipal, but I do want to acknowledge Rob Batherson, our constituent, who became the President of the Conservative Party of Canada, Sean. On the, on the weekend, it's whatever your political affiliation, it's nice to see folks from our part of the world. And I'll note that Suzanne Cowan, primarily of Halifax, is the President of the Liberal Party of Canada, so we're well represented. But congratulations, Rob. Good on you. Approval of minutes of February 23rd and March the 9th. Does somebody want to consider moving those?
I'll move those. Councillor Russell.
Councillor Russell moves them. Seconded by
Councillor Lovelace.
Councillor Lovelace seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are carried. We'll go to the approval of the Order of Business first, and then after that, we'll go to the consent agenda. But just on the approval of the Order of Business, Mr. Clerk.
There is one added item from the clerk's office for today's meeting. Consent of all members of council, the regional council has been received to add this item. That's item 14.1, Proposed Amendments to Administrative Order 2020-009-ADM, respecting COVID-19.
Okay. And that went through executive yesterday. Any other discussion? We will go to a vote on the Order of Business. All those in favor of the Order of Business as outlined?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That's carried. On the consent agenda, I know councillor Lovelace wants to, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to remove item 11.1.4, the endorsement of addition to Spaganak Dick Wallace Hills Reserve, please.
Very good. Anybody else? If not, does somebody want to move the consent items? And then I will read them if they are moved off.
I'll move the consent.
Councillor Blackburn, seconded by councillor Mason. We're going to need to go to a vote on this one, colleagues. Ian?
Beginning with District 11, councillor Cuddle.
In favor?
12, councillor Stoddard.
No, sorry, in favor?
13, councillor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
14, councillor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
15, councillor Russell. In favor? Deputy Mayor outed.
Yes.
District One, councillor Dagel Gammon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, councillor Hensby.
Verbalist.
Three, councillor Kent.
In favor.
Four, councillor Purdy.
In favor.
Five, councillor Austin.
In favor.
Six, councillor Mancini.
In favor.
Seven, councillor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, councillor Smith.
What?
Nine, councillor Cleary.
Yay.
10, councillor Morse.
In favor.
And Mayor Savage.
Favor, so the consent agenda is passed with one item being taken off. So 11.1.2 is from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Forestry Grant, has passed on consent. 11.2.1 which is the Naturalization Initiative's update has passed on consent. And item 11.3.1, is that correct? The accessory buildings and water course setbacks in Buffalo's Eastern Passage Cow Bay Land Use Bylaw has also passed on consent.
That is what I have listened to my last.
Okay. All right, colleagues. Then we will move to calls of declaration of conflicts of interest. Motions of rescission, we have none. Consideration of deferred business, there's none. Public hearing, we have no public hearing today. Correspondence, Mr. Clerk.
Correspondence has been received for item 11.1.1. This correspondence has been distributed to all members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Petitions, colleagues. Councillor Russell.
Thank you very much. I have, I would like to present a petition to extend the active transportation on trail on Cobookwood Road from Suckerbrook Road to First Lake Drive. I've already sent this through to the clerk's office. This has come in with 325 signatures from local groups, and it effectively completes a circle of safety around First Lake that a lot of people enjoy. And so this would just be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you. Any other petitions, colleagues? We have no presentations today. Information items brought forward, there are none. We'll go to reports. So coming from the CAO, a second reading on a proposed bylaw respecting streets and proposed administrative order on boulevard gardens, boulevard gardening. Councillor, what is your wish? Is this a, councillor Austin, was this you? I can't remember. Who wants to move then?
I can move it, Mr. Mayor, although I don't have, just trying to forget my agenda here. If someone else has it, that would be fine with me.
I could do it, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Mancini, go ahead, sir. I saw a bunch of hands. I use was the first.
The Halifax Regional Council, one, adopt bylaw S312, the purpose of which is to amend bylaw S300, respecting streets to exempt boulevard gardens from certain provisions and establish the engineer's oversight of them as set out in the attachment B of the staff report dated January 20th, 2021, so move.
There's a part two, a second clause.
Sir, my apologies. Thank you, councillor Cleary. And part two, adopt administrative order 2020-0140P, the Boulevard Gardens Administrative Order as set out in the attachment C of the staff report dated January 20th, 2021, so move.
Secondary Dagel Gammon.
Seconded by councillor Dagel Gammon. Councillor Mancini, anything on it?
No, I think I'll let, leave it. Councillor Austin, anything else?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just briefly. It, this is, it's just second reading of our Boulevard Garden Guidelines, something that we raised, I think about a year and a half ago. So it's very, it's great to see some clarity brought to this because in the past, if you called 311 and asked, what can I garden that stretch? The answer you get back would vary very much because it was all, it was all a gray zone. And so it's good to have some nice concrete rules that are not, that are very permissive too. So kudos to staff for the work on this. I think we have something here that is very practical. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Seeing no other interest in speaking. Sorry, I'm distracted by councillor Russell's image on his screen. We will go to the question. It's a handsome look.
Beginning with District 12, councillor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion?
13, councillor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
14, councillor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
15, councillor Russell. In favor? Deputy Mayor outed.
Voting yes.
One, councillor Dagel Gammon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, councillor Hensby.
Verbalist.
Three, councillor Kent.
In favor.
Four, councillor Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, councillor Austin.
In favor.
Six, councillor Mancini.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Seven, councillor Mason. For the motion. Eight, councillor Smith.
What?
Nine, councillor Cleary.
Yay.
10, councillor Morse.
Voting in favor.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion, that passes. Thank you, colleagues. 11.1.2 has
You forgot me.
My apologies, councillor Cuddle.
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's 11.1.2 has passed. That's the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Forestry Grant. We had the aptly named Crispin Wood on standby, but don't, don't need him for that. We'll move to 11.1.3, colleagues, which is the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments corner of Main and Titus. Councillor Morse, is that you?
It is. So I just had a few comments before the motion goes up, I guess. Is that the best way to do it?
The best is to put the motion on the floor and then
Okay.
Give us your thoughts.
Okay, sorry. Just copying it now.
It's in the chat line too, I think.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. So this is to initiate the process to consider amendments to the municipal's planning strategy for Halifax and the land use bylaw for Halifax mainland to the C2C zone, Dutch Village Road mixed use relative to building height, rooftop structures, building depth, lot coverage and building setbacks as outlined in the staff report dated March 9th, 2021, and rezone 60 and 62 Main Avenue Halifax to the C2C zone to permit a six-story multi-unit building and adopt a public participation program as outlined in the community engagement section of the staff report dated March 9th, 2021.
Second, councillor Mason.
Thank you, councillor Mason. Councillor Morse, go ahead.
So this, this is for some zoning changes for a new building at the intersection behind me, Main and Titus in Fairview. I'm sure you saw the report, but I'll just recap that it's a proposed infill project, and it's at one of the busiest intersections in Fairview. So for a six-story building with commercial space, 119 residential units and 178 parking spaces are proposed. I have some concerns about the design as it is presented so far. And the main problem is the driveway, which at the moment is not actually legal because the entrance and exit is onto Titus, which has the higher volume of cars. And the driveway entrance entrance should be on the lower, the street with the lower amount of traffic, which is actually Main in this case. It has to do with the slope being difficult. So I think it needs to go back for revisions. And my second concern is just the way the building is designed to go right to the corner with no setback. And this is the corner that we're talking about. If you can see beside me here, it's, it's quite a narrow and congested corner. So I think having a large commercial and residential building right here will, will add to that unless there's some kind of a setback. So I spoke with planning staff, and I think they're on the line with us and they can correct me. But I think what I'm going to ask everybody to do is just to vote down this motion that's presented here, and I'll make a small change to it, and that will require it going back for revisions. What I'd like to do is just remove the, the part about lot, lot coverage. And that will mean it reverts to 75% lot coverage instead of going to 100% lot coverage.
Okay, so councillor Morse, is, is your alternative motion one of the ones listed in the report, one of the alternatives?
No, it's not.
Okay, so you have a new motion that you'll come in if this is defeated.
Right.
I see.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure how to do, whether this is a point of order or not. There I raised my hand.
Yeah.
So
Could just, just use the chat line, folks, like we did before.
Can we? Yes, sir.
Go ahead, councillor Mason.
Can we get the lawyer or clerks read on whether we can add an amendment to this rather than defeat it, just so that we have that clarity? Because it seems to me like that doesn't really go against the intent of this, still enabling going ahead, but it's saying councillor has concerns and wants it to go this way. So, so can we get some advice on that?
So is that Mr. Treves or somebody from planning? Who wants to come forward? I see Mr. Treves is activating himself.
I think actually, Mayor, I think it might be helpful to hear from, from planning in terms of the discussion and, and likely an amendment would be reasonable, but I'd like to hear from planning.
Great. Who do we have that? Sean Gillis, I see. Mr. Gillis, how are you?
Not too bad. Yourself, Mr. Mayor?
Very well. Thanks for joining us. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sean Gillis, as you mentioned, planning and development. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillors, I would say that removing the reference to lot coverage, essentially telling us, don't consider that particular ask, is a very minor change to what we're being told to do. And if it works as an amendment for council, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, councillor Mason or councillor, did you want to? Did you have a thought on that way?
Well, it's just, it's a double jeopardy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a double jeopardy situation. If we vote it down and then we get the amended motion and then we don't like it. Not that I think that's likely to happen in this case. Potentially, you can end up in a situation where we have nothing to vote on. So I think the preferred course of action, if possible, not having seen the motion would be if councillor Morse could propose an amendment, change the wording of the motion on the floor, we vote on that, and then we vote on the amended motion should that pass.
Okay, so let's go through with other discussion and we'll come back to councillor Morse. You're not proposing an amendment here. You're advising, so thank you for that. Councillor John, are you raising your hand now?
Mayor, yeah, it's just the chat's hard to get to from ram. If, if the councillor so chooses, I would suggest she consider testing council with respect to amending item number one of the motion to remove the reference to lot coverage. And, and then the matter could be initiated.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to that with councillor Morse. Thank you. Councillor Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I have a comment and a question for councillor Morse when she comes back. The, the comment is, you know, when I was looking at this on Sunday night, you know, my reaction to it, I mean, we're talking area with transit, Main Street, commercial node, so it makes sense to have some density there. There's obviously particulars and design, all that to be worked out, so I'm on board with initiating something here. The reaction that I had was, was, was similar to councillor Morse's concern, and it's that presence on the corner. Not so much from a perspective of, well, is it, is it crowding the corner too much? I just that, you know, this is the Main Street in Fairview. I realized there's an elevation change that makes it challenging. The proposal appears to have some good, you know, in the concept, some good articulation as it goes down Main in terms of those residential doors, but you know, it kind of, for the Main Street and in the area, it kind of does Titus to me a little bit of a disservice in terms of, you know, you've got the door high, door off the corner on the side of a retaining wall, and then a parking garage style entrance. I mean, I would hope that we could do a little bit better than that in terms of, you know, this being the future transit hub, being the pedestrian street, all of that good stuff. So I put that all out there. You know, I don't have a motion or anything. It's more of floating this at this time for our planning staff who are in attendance. Presumably, the applicant is somewhere listening as well, is things that we should really think about as, as this gets a little bit more refined. My question for councillor Morse, in terms of eliminating the lot coverage piece, if she could expand when she comes back, just a little bit more on what specifically in terms of the lot coverage is the main concern that she wants, like why that particular piece? That she doesn't want to have any flexibility for staff there because, you know, I, myself, my, my take on these things is I always like to leave them a little bit open-ended so that, you know, as you go along, you can really, you can, you can trade things off because, I mean, to be blunt about it, it can always be voted down in the end if what comes back is not something that you like. So I'd like to hear a little bit more from her, why the lot coverage in particular is an area where she doesn't want to have any flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So actually, my question is sort of similar to what councillor Austin just mentioned. And, and maybe this is just a good one for the planners. So I'll ask Mr. Gillis. So under the current zoning or the rezoning to C2C for, for these lands, I think the other ones are already C2C. So the, is the current lot coverage, because I don't know the mainland LUB as well as I probably should, is the current lot coverage for those 75% as had been indicated earlier?
Mr. Gillis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just one important fact to clarify that councillor just mentioned, yes, some of the lands are already zoned C2C. So just to make sure there's no confusion there, they can do some of what they want on part of their property. To the question, yes, there's a 75% lot coverage. Important to note that there's an exemption for underground parking structures as long as that parking structure is not above one meter above grade. And so the applicant's suggestion is that because the site is sloping greatly, that exemption doesn't do a lot for them. So that's kind of the, the situation there. So there is a thought that your parking garage could be larger than your building if it's not too high off the ground.
And given, I mean, at this point, we only see conceptual drawings. We're not seeing anything detailed at this point. But if, given the discussion we're having, and whether we, we take out lot coverage or not, because clearly the driveway at its current location in the concept on Titus, which probably doesn't meet the streets by law, and so obviously, as things progress, things would have to change. Either movement of the driveway, move it to a different street, those could all alter the, the overall ball of clay that developers tend to work with. And so to councillor Austin's point, so if we send this back and initiate it and, and say, look, we have some concerns over this. As you and staff are working on this, clearly, you know, as it comes back, there will be some push with the developer, I would assume, and say, well, you're, you're not going to get 100% because that's not what council's going to endorse. But if it ends up being 78, 79, 80, 81, you know, are those the kind of discussions that we will end up having if we leave lot coverage in? Or if we say, no, I'll leave the, the lot coverage and automatically the developer can build out to 100%? So what are the parameters within, within which you're working, and what are we likely to see coming back to us when it comes for first reading?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we've got some hypotheticals, but it's good to discuss. I think the big question on lot coverage is that idea that because the lot coverage for the parking garage is tied to only going so far above grade, one of the things we could certainly look at is, well, do you make that number higher? Do you say you can do so much grade, two meters, whatever, which would effectively get them? As written now, the lot coverage, there's no number attached. You're exempt, and it's not like 85%, 90, it's you're exempt. So conceivably, you could go to 100, and conceivably, if they could stay under a meter, they could go to 100. So I think one thing to keep in mind with the rezoning, one of the difficulties when you're getting into the details of the building design is, as always with the rezoning, if, even if we tinker with the things, like they're asking to, excuse me, the things being requirements, then if they come back with a building that meets those requirements and it passes. if they come back with a building that meets those requirements and it passes the zoning, uh, the rezoning, they can build it. So trying to solve design problems through a rezoning is not always super easy. Or could uh p- things that people would consider a design problem or maybe not ideal. So we could get at them, but I think we might need a little more direction to specifically look at C two C standards and how they impact things like Counselor Austin mentioned. The location and design of the of the ground floor entrance, that sort of thing. So I guess to 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 sum it up a little more more closely, the design issues that council might consider, uh, difficult to get at through a rezoning unless we have really specific instructions to change the zone to do that.
Right, and I see, Mister Mayor, uh, I'm probably out of time. No one else is. Come on, may I, if you indulge me, could I ask one quick question?
That that's correct. There's nobody else. I'm gonna let Counselor Morris close, so you can, you're in effect on your second uh intervention. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So Mister Gillis, just quickly, is this area, so if we don't rezone it to this, could we do a development agreement? Is that a possibility here?
I see. Through you, Mister Mayor. No, we don't have enabling policy to do a development agreement here. We have a zone, we can expand it, we can change the requirements, but I suppose that council could direct us to change the MPS to make a development agreement provision. I'm gonna throw it out that perhaps other colleagues might might want to weigh in on that more, but I would be hesitant to walk in that route because you've already told people, you'd already told the property owners that zoning is the tool you have. And also, we haven't scoped that out at all, so I I don't know what that would look like. So those two big provisos, you could ask for us. I'm guessing we'd probably come back with a sup report if that is the case, if that would be the council's will and request.
Okay, I'll leave that to Counselor Morse to think about. I mean, I'd be open to making a change to that, but I see Miss Denty popped up on my screen. Uh, do you have anything to add, Miss Denty?
Wanted to add in that um, it is as as Mister Gillis intended that we don't have policy to direct development here through a development agreement. It's intended to be through the zone. If there were design standards that we wanted to look at, we could potentially look at making some amendments to the zone to accommodate those. I think it's this one, it's a case of, um, you know, there there needs to be rework of the design and we know that, right? We also know that right now there are a few elements of the proposed building that just don't meet the blunt requirements of the C two C zone. So to to turn it around and suggest a different approach, yes, we would need a supplementary report to do that. And of course, that's different from what the the overall uh program is in the area relative to development, and it's different from what was being asked by the applicants. So just wanted to throw that in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we're throwing a lot back at you, Counselor Morris, uh, but it goes back to you.
Okay, um, I I think I think uh it's not just about this building for me. Uh, I have some issues with the C two C zone in general. It's it's a it's a zone that's just for Fairview and um it allows a hundred percent lot coverage. And some, wh- when when you're seeing a hundred percent lot coverage in a suburban area, it ends up meaning that there's no room for landscaping. Uh, there's the the sidewalks feel very crowded sometimes. In in some cases, I I I guess in this case, if there's uh zero lot coverage on this building at this very busy intersection, which is going to be a bus rapid transit route and is supposed to have bike connections and and bike pathways at some point, it just locks us in. Uh, if the if it's a hundred percent lot coverage, there's no room to expand the streets or or make room for active transportation. So um, I I don't know the best way to to refine this other than to send it back, not allow a hundred percent lot coverage for this particular building and uh review the C two C zone for the the requirement to have a hundred percent or the allowance of a hundred percent lot coverage would be another preference of mine. But whatever the best way is to do that, I I take advice from my colleagues.
Um, I'm gonna go to Counselor Cuddle, but we'll need to know, Counselor Morris, whether you want to vote on this or whether you want to try the amendment. I'll go to Counselor Cuddle.
Here we go. Um, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wondering about the concept of the building and along the along the ground floor. Um, my understanding is that it will be some commercial. And I just I just want to reiterate, you know, kind of back up what Counselor Morris is saying in terms of what we look at this this roadway and all the things we're asking it to do. Um, having a little bit of wiggle room between the building and the right of way, I could see being a very positive thing. Particularly if there's commercial and you want some of that commercial to spill out onto the sidewalk. Um, you know, these aren't, I don't I don't know what the right of way width is. I'm I'm looking behind you at that picture, Catherine, and I'm guessing that is that's the corner. Um, you know, you have, you know, you you have your sidewalk. So I I think when we when we talk about making walkable communities, complete communities, you know, integrating residential with commercial and kind of, you know, building up this community center, I I would side with you, Catherine, that that perhaps a hundred percent lot coverage kind of limits what we can then expect of the right of way. And that having that little bit of a setback would be a good thing for the community as a whole as it continues to grow and evolve.
Okay, thank you. So right now, we're voting on the motion. Uh, Counselor or Mister Traves, he said he thought it could be amended. But that's your call, Counselor Morse. Do you wanna, do you want to vote on this? And then if it fails, bring back an alternative, or do you want to amend?
Well, um I guess thanks, uh, thank you for the discussion. Um, I I I would be okay to amend it to remove lot coverage. That's one simple change. But I really like the idea of having a bit more of a review of C two C in general. So could we remove lot coverage and add um, a a more general review of C two C or is that too much of an amendment?
You could do that in a sup report.
Yes, okay.
So Counselor Ian here, I was gonna suggest, uh, if your if your intention is to remove lot coverage on this specific item, that would be an amending motion right now, and then we could deal with the motion on the floor as amended, if that passes. And then there could be a supplementary motion made for a staff report to look into those specific items. That would be a a process that I think could be could be serving your needs.
Thank you, Clerk. Catherine, uh, Counselor Morse, I'm sorry?
That sounds fine with me.
So the amendment.
Counselor Cleary, what's second?
Okay, I think it's probably a friendly amendment. Oh, I don't know. I guess it's contravene- contravening, so the uh, we need, we need, we need to vote on that, Ian, or to take out the lot coverage. Or John?
Um, yeah, Mayor, through you, counsel. Um, rather than coming back at the end, I would suggest if there's a desire to amend that the amendment be um, based on the conversation to remove the reference to lot coverage and uh, to move for a supplemental staff report to consider the C one, C two uh, zone. Just do it all in once.
So it's all as part of the same amendment, Counselor Morse, that would be to remove lot coverage? And to ask for a supplemental report, I guess that would be number three, perhaps, to ask for a supplemental report on the C two C zone and in that area, Counselor Morse?
Oh, that works for me. Thank you.
Okay, so that's an amendment seconded by Counselor Cleary. Counselor, uh, Russell on the amendment?
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm going back to the comments that um, uh, Counselor Austin made a little while ago about removing flexibility. We aren't asking for the amendments to pass. We aren't asking asking for a change to uh the land use bylaws. We're asking for something to be considered. And so through the discussion, uh, it might be considered that reducing, uh, sorry, increasing seventy-five percent to eighty, eighty-five, ninety, a hundred, uh, would be warranted. But it might also be considered that um, no change is necessary. So I don't see any uh, any value per se in removing lot coverage uh from consideration in this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Russell. So are we ready for the vote on the amendment, colleagues? Are there any other questions or clarification? So the the motion is on the amendment to remove lot coverage and to add a supplemental report. Correct, Counselor Morse?
Correct.
So on the amendment, let's go to the vote.
Beginning in District thirteen, Counsel Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counsel Blackburn. Counsel Blackburn. Counsel Blackburn. Fifteen, Counsel Russell.
Thank you against the amendment.
Deputy Mayor Oathead.
Voting yes.
District one, Counsel Digglegamon.
Voting in favor of the amendment.
Two, Counsel Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counsel Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counsel Purdy.
Voting in favor.
District five, Counsel Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counsel Mancini.
Voting in favor of the amendment.
Seven, Counsel Mason.
For the amendment.
Eight, Counsel Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counsel Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counsel Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counsel Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counsel Stoddard.
Voting in favor.
Counsel Blackburn. Mayor Savage.
Voting yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, yes from you as well, so that passes. Uh, so the amendment passes. And um, we will now then, unless there's discussion, colleagues, we will vote on the motion as amended. Is there any discussion on that?
Let's hear on the motion.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
I'll leave a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, let's go to the vote on the uh motion as amended. Mister Clerk.
Beginning with District fourteen, Counsel Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
Fifteen, Counsel Russell.
In favor?
Deputy Mayor Oathead.
Voting yes.
One, Counsel Digglegamon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counsel Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counsel Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counsel Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counsel.
In favor.
Six, Counsel Mancini.
So is that in voting in favor of the motion?
Seven, Counsel Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counsel Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counsel Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counsel Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counsel Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counsel Stoddard.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counsel Lovelace.
Uh, yes, in favor.
And Mayor Savage.
Favor that motion, Cleary. So thank you on that, Counselor Morse.
Thank you, everyone.
I think I might have voted twice, but.
We'll just count to one. Um, item eleven point one point four was taken off consent. That's the endorsement of addition to Svegenakadik Wallace Hills Reserve. Counselor Lovelace?
Alaylin, Mayor Savage, um, uh, I move that Halifax Regional Council authorize the mayor to write a letter on behalf of Halifax Regional Council supporting the addition of Lot three two nine to the Wallace Hills number fourteen A area of the existing Svegenakadik Reserve. And to direct the chief administrative officer to work with Svegenakadik to identify any municipal services or assistance required when the reserve is formally approved and the development process commences. Thank you.
Second, Counsel Russell.
Thank you. Counsel Lovelace, anything on it?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, colleagues, Mayor Savage and I had the opportunity last week uh to meet with Chief SAC and Rhonda Knockwood uh, at their new facility in Hammonds Plains and and talk about our future together, working together. Um, and I wanted to take this item off the consent agenda, just as uh as a demonstration of our support um, for Svegenakadik and uh, you know, the incredible uh vision that they have in Hammonds Plains and and working with them in the future uh to advance um all of the initiatives that they have to build a an amazing community uh, in Svegenakadik uh eh within Hammonds Plains. And so I do appreciate this opportunity to uh to show our support today and uh look forward to working with them in the future.
Ready for the question, colleagues?
Question.
Question.
Beginning with District fifteen, Counsel Russell.
In favor?
Deputy Mayor Oathead.
Voting yes.
One, Counsel Digglegamon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counsel Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counsel Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counsel Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counsel Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counsel Mancini.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Seven, Counsel Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counsel Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counsel Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counsel Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counsel Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counsel Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counsel Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counsel Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
Mayor Savage.
Voting yes on the motion. I thank Counselor Lovelace, um. I just, I think that this is really a positive thing, and there was a point in time when this might have been a little uh, little more contentious possibly. So I want to thank Counselor Mason as well for his ongoing work when dealing with the Mi'kmaq and indigenous issues as the designated rep, along with myself. Um, thank you, Counsel Lovelace. Eleven point two point one naturalization initiatives update uh, has passed, I believe, on consent. As has eleven point three point one, coming out of Harbor East, which is uh buildings and water course setbacks and buffers Eastern Passage, Cow Bay land use bylaw. Uh, we will move to uh coming out of Heritage Advisory, eleven point four point one, proposed administrative order respecting a financial incentives program for Schmitfield and Old South suburb heritage conservation districts. And this could be none other than Counselor Mason.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move that Halifax Regional Council adopt administrative order twenty twenty zero zero five ADM respecting the Heritage Conservation District incentive program for Schmitfield and Old South suburb as contained in attachment A of February nineteen twenty twenty-one. Staff, for nice move.
Second, Counsel.
Second by Counsel Stoddard. Thank you, Counsel Stoddard. Counselor Mason?
Thank you very much, Miss Mayor. So it's been a long time coming. We've been working for eight, nine, ten years now on getting these heritage conservation districts done. The uh Old South suburb was first contemplated when the H R M by design process resulted in the downtown plan being adopted in two thousand and nine and uh Schmitfield was added around two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve and adopted just a couple of years ago, both of them. Um, you know, this is, uh, I support having both of these uh funds administered as one program. And I think that's actually the model for the future, uh, having a bunch of distinct discrete pots of money uh, as we add more and more heritage conservation districts would be problematic in terms of administration and and overhead. Uh, and and I think that this is a a great step forward for protecting, preserving and and enhancing the the at-risk heritage uh in uh both of these historic districts. I do want to address, though, you know, there there has been some concern raised by uh some folks in uh Schmitfield that uh one property in particular, the uh property on Queen Street has been identified for uh being allowed thirteen twenty Queen Street to be allowed to be funded, even though the work is substantially complete. And I and I want to let council know that in the case of that building, uh, they were legally able to demolish the building uh, prior to the uh appointment of the H C D. It was one of the two properties that the consultants report identified in Schmitfield was in poor uh condition and at risk. And uh by that demolition is avoided by negotiating with the property owner and through a consistent and pro- proactive cooperation by them. And that the design plans that were approved prior to the H C D being uh adopted complied with what ended up being in the H C D and that the restoration work was extensive and a certificate of appropriateness was approved by uh uh staff in the Heritage Conservation District. So uh while other folks in both those areas have been doing renovations, uh, none of the buildings that in in the last year or two have done. uh, none of the buildings that in in the last year or two have done renovations were at risk. They weren't uh, buildings that like one of the top things that I was hearing going back to two thousand and sixteen from folks who are passionate about Schmidtville and passionate about heritage was that we were going to lose thirteen twenty Queen Street. And uh, and and by working proactively and and uh, you know, together to to make this uh, property owner, uh, when when the person who owned it passed away and it came up for sale, they were able to to uh, buy it and uh, and and do a substantial renovation that I think is a real credit to the kind of thing we're trying to do in Halifax. So so while I understand some people feel that uh, we should allow anyone who's done renovations in the last year or two to backdate that and apply for funding, uh, none of the other properties were at risk like this one was, and and I don't think that would be a wise use of funds. So I do support going ahead as uh, as proposed by staff. Uh, and and I think this is a great day for heritage conservation uh, in the district, and I thank council for your support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Mason, just make sure I'm on off mute. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Austin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you staff for the work that's been done on this one. Uh, just uh, two questions. Uh, first is regarding the the limit uh, per year that a property can uh, can get, which is not the same as what they're eligible for over time. And I'm just curious how we uh, how we arrived at that approach. Um, because I imagine for some properties, that's, yeah, I mean, you can, you can game, game, game it out so that you do are doing X improvements in year one and X improve Y improvements in year two and then Z in year three. But for some property owners, if it's all kind of integrated work, I mean, uh, by limiting it to your your potential per year, I mean, uh, you know, are we, are we just adding kind of an administration burden um, for the purposes of stretching out our own cash flow? And so I'm just give staff a comment a little bit on that one.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor, to uh, through the mayor, uh, to your question. Um, if I, if I completely understand your question, um, how we arrived at the uh, at the uh, the structure of the, the, of the budget for the uh, for the program. Uh, it was based largely on the uh, a study prepared by DSRA architects. Um, they did a uh, an estimate of probable costs um, inspecting each buil- building individually. And uh, based on that estimate, um, we we arrived at a general program budget and uh, an average uh, grant for for uh, each each uh, property as well. We arrived at about fifty thousand dollars would be a generous grant for the average property in in Schmidtville and the Old South Suburb. And the, that that was for the conservation grants. So there's two types of grants in this program. And for the functional improvement grants, we based that largely on the Barrington Street Program and the success with the Barrington Street Program with the fifteen percent tax rebate. And we established a fifty percent cost shared grant uh, be be for the larger projects, or the for the larger redevelopment projects to take advantage of. Um, and please, I'm, I'm, uh, if I haven't answered your question, please, uh, please continue.
If, if I may, uh, apologies, my wording, uh, stream of consciousness was not exactly uh, at its best. Um, so I, 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 the, the, the main thrust is that functional improvement grants um, where each building, uh, for each building is four hundred thousand per year or uh, that they could get up to eight hundred thousand over the five years. Um. I, I'm just wondering, like, you know, are are we setting up a situation where it's like, well, I have to apply, reapply, reapply, reapply to get up towards i- if I have a giant pile of work to do to get up to the maximum versus, well, why couldn't we just um, provide the maximum that they could get in one year instead of making them come back?
Um, uh, thank you for the question through you to the, the mayor. Um, it, it is anticipated that we, we would get several grant, uh, grant applications for the functional improvement program. And by limiting it to four hundred thousand dollars as opposed to the full eight hundred thousand dollars that a- available, it allows for um, it allows a greater opportunity for more than a few um, properties to receive the grant and to and to participate and to receive uh, an amount in any given year. Whereas if we, if we allowed the full eight hundred thousand dollars to one property owner in in one given year, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow opportunities for uh, some of the smaller uh, property owners, um, or for uh, it wouldn't allow opportunity for as as great a number of property owners to apply to the program in any given year.
Okay, so did we, in deciding to take that approach, did we consider the flip side, which is, I mean, we're creating an administrative incentive to game the system of, I'm going to apply for, you know, X bundle of work now, and then I'll apply for Y bundle of work uh, the following year, and then uh, maybe I've exhausted my total amount by then. Um, you know, I basically what I'm really just trying to drive at is whether or not, um, you know, this is being driven by us trying to manage our cash flow, or whether this is being driven by what is actually the best um, structure of a program for for the property owners to restore the heritage buildings.
Yeah, so, so, uh, and thanks for the question again, uh, through you to the mayor. Um, it, it is, um, the functional improvement grants are are set up to provide some, uh, some measure of funding for functional improvements. The program is largely based around conservation of the exterior and uh, and uh, subsequent to that, we also want to provide funding for functional systems improvements like uh, lighting, electricity, plumbing. So that that secondary sort of aspect of the program, the functional improvement grants, is set up to provide some, some level of funding. Um, uh, and uh, and and there's a, there's a design in the program where unused funds from the conservation go into functional improvements. So, so at at the end of the year, a property, uh, an applicant for the functional improvement grants may receive more than they were, they were initially uh, awarded because of uh, any excess, any excess funds from the grant, the conservation grants goes into the uh, uh, functional improvement grants. So in a sense, it is, it is uh, the latter, the uh, the cash flow aspect of of the program. We want to we want to provide some measure of funding for functional improvements, but really the, the, the full intent of the program is conservation.
Okay. All right, uh, I will let it go at that. I, I'd be more inclined to just, well, you know, we'll just borrow, borrow the money if we, if there was a year in which we were short um, because everyone applied all at once than trying to, you know, tackle it this way, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure I introduced that with Seamus McGrail, a heritage planner extraordinaire. I also see Aaron Myrnahan. I'm not sure if you were looking to get in on this, Aaron?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to maybe clarify for the counselors as well, um, that that part of the rationale is really uh, ensuring that this is uh, that our budgeting going forward for the next five years in this program is predictable uh, and and clear for council on a year-to-year basis, but also understanding that a lot of the larger projects that would be making use of the functional improvement grants, uh, you know, into the hundreds of thousands of dollars are still several years away, and we'll have to go through a multi-year approval process. So the thought is that they'll really be coming in at the end of uh, of the program, uh, when uh, that, that money has sort of accrued, and there's a lot more for them to take advantage of.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. All right. Seeing no other questions, comments, we will move to a vote in.
Beginning with Deputy Mayor Oatit.
Voting yes.
District one, Counsel Dagle Gavin.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counsel Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counsel Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counsel Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counsel Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counsel Mancini.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Seven, Counsel Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counsel Smith. Counselor Smith.
He put in favor in the maybe he can't unmute.
District nine, Counsel Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counsel Morse.
In favor of the motion.
Eleven, Counsel Cuddle.
In favor of the motion.
Twelve, Counsel Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counsel Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counsel Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
Fifteen, Counsel Russell.
In favor.
Mayor Savage.
Favor of the motion, uh, the motion carries. Thank you, Counselor uh, Mason.
Thank you, colleagues.
We'll go to uh, items coming from members of council. Counselor Morse, uh, community outdoor rinks.
Right. Um, so I wanted to introduce a motion because um, a group came to me uh, from the Bridgeview area wanting to resurrect their community rink, and uh, it's a lot of work to set up an outdoor community rink. And at the end of two or three months of work on the part of these volunteers, they discovered that their insurance was going to be two thousand dollars. And that was twice what they had expected. So they came to me looking for some help, which um, which I was happy to provide. But um, this um, this motion, which I hope uh, my colleagues will support, is to um, to just ask for a staff report to see if this type of insurance could be um, provided uh, through HRM. So um, shall I read the motion?
Yep.
Initiate the process to consider amendments to the MPS for, oh, sorry, wrong mo- wrong motion.
We're not going back there.
Yeah, no, let's not. Um, now, the motion is uh, that Halifax Regional Council requests a staff report outlining the feasibility and available options to extend municipal insurance or operating grants to support community groups in setting up community rinks.
Seconded by.
Seconded by Counselor Mancini Lovelace, Leslie Lovelace.
That's a combination that scares many, but that's okay.
Uh, powerful, well.
Powerful, yeah.
Okay, we ready for the question, colleagues, on that?
Mr. Mayor, have a question?
I don't see anybody in the chat line.
Yeah, I'm there.
I'm there too.
I'm there. I don't know why.
Oh, I see Counselor. I, I only see Counselor Lovelace now.
Well, I, I. I don't know.
It's above the motion.
It is above the motion. Counsel Mancini is first.
Looks like Counsel Austin is Counsel Mancini, you go ahead. I got Counselor Austin, then Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I support the motion. I do have a, a, um, a concern or a comment I'd like to add to it. The challenge with outdoor rinks, we're not Northern or Brunswick, we're not Quebec, we're not Edmonton. Our winters are, are, are challenging when it comes to trying to maintain ice. Uh, we see many of our neighbors and friends doing uh, backyard rinks, and I've attempted this in in District six for a number of years, and it, it's been very difficult. So the only question I, I, our concern that I have around this, if we're going to support uh, community-led uh, rinks, I would like to see these links be multi-use. So rather maybe than just uh, putting the plastic bladder down, that we in fact put cement down and have the ability to drain it when we need it. I believe in Counsel Hensby's district, there is a rink that's multi-use where they freeze it in the they fill it with water in the winter time and they freeze it, but it can be used for lacrosse and ball hockey and inline skating and skateboarding. I think that's the best use of, uh, if even, uh, it's Counselor's district funds to get involved in this, or community raising the money, if we're going to support this to encourage our communities to take a step further and make it multi-use. So I just uh, share that with the counselor for her motion and staff. I think that's the best use of dollars. If we had the winters like we used to have, uh, and uh, as Counselor clearly alluded to, some of our friends in a political party, uh, may not be aware that there's a crisis when it comes to our climate, uh, that would be the case, but we do have a climate uh, crisis, and our winters aren't like they used to be. So uh, I just share that with everyone and I hope that be uh, considered as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Mancini. And uh, I think I told you once that somebody once complained to me that the lakes haven't frozen properly since amalgamation. Uh.
And I'm sure that was our fault too. That's right, yeah.
Nor have the Canadians won a cup since then.
That's right.
The Leafs since Confederation. Um, okay, uh, Counselor uh, Austin on the next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, wholeheartedly in support of this. I just wanted to relay, um, it, we, I had a similar challenge in my district around the Findlay Community Center. Uh, there's a group of parents that uh, had organized um, a community rink there. I'd supported it with district capital um, in terms of getting materials ready. Uh, and they operated it, I think it was two years that they, they had it going. Um, it hasn't proceeded the last two years, and one of the main reasons, um, this, this year, it just kind of fizzled out, but last year, the big, the biggest hurdle with it was actually this insurance piece. And it really, it played a very large role in that project not, not going ahead um, to the community's loss. And I think when we look at this, um, the amount of value that we get as a municipality out of um, community volunteers going to putting together a rink, I mean, w- we, we can't buy the labor that goes into this and the community engagement and just the all-around recreation that comes out of uh, out of this sort of work. So I, I really think that this is something that we would be wise to not allow things like insurance to just become the barrier, because it really is. And we're struggling with it a little bit on the community gardening side as well, where uh, HTRM has taken on a more active role in terms of that insurance support. So I really think this is a good, uh, good thing to look at. And uh, good, kudos to Counselor Morse for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lovelace.
Thank you. Uh, I completely support this initiative. Uh, I'm really glad that it's been uh, brought forward because this is something, you know, that community groups uh, are struggling with, uh, as was pointed out by my colleagues, you know, the cost of insurance uh, is outrageous. Uh, the reason that I want to speak uh, on this in particular is because of the just, the, the differences that some community groups are paying uh, with regards to insurance. And I just want to be really clear uh, what community group means. Um, you know, so while yes, these community groups are, are, are building community and doing amazing things in our community, are they doing it on HRM land? Are they doing it on private land? Are they doing it on land uh, that the community group owns? And the discrepancy that takes place between the insurance program that currently exists for community halls, for example, you know, you have uh, one community hall that benefits uh, from the insurance program uh, that pays fifteen hundred dollars a year, whereas another community hall uh, doesn't benefit, and they're paying well over four thousand. So I'm just wondering whether or not, um, you know, we, we consider, uh, you know, what exactly does it mean uh, within this motion? Are we talking about HRM land specifically? Or also private or community-owned land? Thank you.
Thank you. So that's something that we would discuss if it, when it comes back, I think, uh, advice from, from the staff and decision of council. Uh, Counselor, um, Russell.
Thank you very much. Um, we used to have a community rink here. It was put together by a gentleman named Lee Bagnell, who is absolutely phenomenal, one of our best community volunteers. And and he did this uh, back when Bob Harvey was the counselor for Lower Sackville. They set it up at Acadia Park, which is a phenomenal park that a number of people are, are familiar with. And it was going for a number of years. Uh, the, the two-by-twelves or uh, would be set up around and and the bladder would be put in, and he would water it, and there was a shed there uh, to hold some of the equipment, and it was enjoyed by all sorts of people in the community. It was fantastic for a few years. Um, and one of the challenges that they found uh, was that they were not able to keep the ice cold. Uh, so it kept on melting and ultim- ultimately, um, and and this is, they would put it in in the beginning of winter, and because the temperature fluctuated so much, it would be frozen one day, uh, wet the next, to frozen the next, wet the next. Um, ultimately, it was decided that there wasn't enough value to it, so they discontinued uh, the rink that we have here. And I see that happening more and more, um, as the climate changes. Uh, and and so th- that is one of the reasons that I'm not going to be able to support this, because I don't think that uh, the communities supported rinks um, have enough of a future. The other piece is that this is going to be municipal insurance. It's going to be our risk. Uh, so they would have to be, I think, maintained to a standard uh, that the municipality would support. Um, we can't just ensure a thing and have it not meet any standards whatsoever. And we, and this only addresses one piece of what we're asking the community to do. So because we don't have any standards that I'm aware of uh, around municipal rinks, uh, which is what we are accepting as risk, I don't think I'm, I'm going to be able to support this motion. I appreciate the idea. I think that our community groups are doing phenomenal things, and I appreciate all of the effort that uh, that the community groups put in and that all of the volunteers put in. But I don't think we can ensure this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Cleary.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to support the staff report. You know, I have a number of community rinks in the area, some that still try to operate and some that have given up just because of the, the climate. But insurance is one of those interesting things. So if, if a group of people decide to go out on a municipal field and play soccer, they don't need insurance. But as soon as an organized group puts some infrastructure in place, and typically to Counselor Mancini's point, well, what's behind me is multipurpose because it's swimming in the summer. Can't skate on it anymore. It doesn't freeze. But many of these are in our tennis courts or in other areas on municipal land. And to Counselor Lovelace's point, I don't think we could extend municipal insurance to private land. It would have to be our own land. But the assumption of risk, you know, my, my fear would be when this comes back, that an organized group, if we extend our risk coverage to them, they're going to have to only have it open when some sort of designated operator is there. You know, it will lose that kind of community flavor in the sense that kids can just jump on it and play as they do at Springvale right now. Well, not right now, but a, a number of weeks ago. And, you know, you'll lose that spontaneity that, that comes from a community activity. And so I'm looking forward to see what our, our, our legal and risk management team input into this would be and our park staff, because I'm, I'm skeptical. I'll put it that way. I really don't think, given the insurance requirements for any group doing pretty much anything on municipal land and, and the, the very tough requirements to ensure we prevent serious injury, death, et cetera. And so I'm, I'm, I'm supporting this report and I'm looking forward to see when it comes back. My hopes aren't up. I'll put it that way, that we're going to be able to do this. But, but thank you, Counselor Morris, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dagelgannon.
Thank you, Mayor Savage. Chair, the Counselor Morris, thank you so much for bringing this forward. We have the Elder Bank Rink. They want to resurrect the Elder Bank Community Rink. We've got Grand Lake and Wellington that want to do a community rink. And Waverly just last night talked about it at their meeting for the Waverly Community Association for the Village Green. So getting outside and being able to, you know, just have some fun and go skating is what everybody dreams to do. So I would absolutely support the staff report. And I wonder if we might add for the non-HRM properties where community rinks may be, would the staff report be able to consider what would an MOU for the private landowners, what that might be able to do? And if we could add that into the staff report to see how we could support community rinks that are on non-HRM-owned land? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to lend my support to this. Thank you, Counselor Morris, for bringing this forward. I also was contacted by community volunteers who wanted to do a community rink in our District Four. And when they found out how high the insurance was, they, they said no. And I didn't even think to bring, you know, we could bring this forward as a motion. So thank you so much. I, community engagement, community involvement, kids have been skating on frozen ice since, you know, frozen ice was a thing. So I, i- it's just the benefits, I think, far outweigh the risk or the, it's just another place for kids to gather and have fun and for adults to talk, just community engagement. I, I'm fully in support of this and I, I really look forward to seeing what the staff report is when it comes back. And I also, I'm learning a lot from this discussion of all the things that you had, like the checks and balances. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensby.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. And similar to Counselor Lovelace's comments in regards to different type of facilities, I, I'd like to know in regards to those recreational groups that do have it on their own property or if they lease the property to a private individual. I have the Pores like Community Services Association that do it on the tennis courts here for a number of years. They haven't done it in a while because of the weather fluctuation. But every year, Lily's Hill Association and, and outside Sheet Harbor, they'd have a beautiful outdoor spot. And that's, it's a recreational group that leases the property and, you know, the insurance is one of those matters that can get cumbersome for them. But I'd like to see the report come forward and see if there's any extension. I know there's some event insurance that people can buy for their community groups or organizations, particularly events through the municipality, through our carrier, but I'm not sure if this type of insurance be, be available because as Counselor Russell says, to what standard does the, the rink get kept? You know, do we anticipate it to be groomed occasionally or frequently? Flooded occasionally or frequently? You know, those kind of matters, issues we'll, we'll, we'll have to be contented with because the more, the more cracks in the ice, the more injury risk there is. So I would like to see what kind of standards could be possibly required if they were trying to have a community-based rink. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'll support this as well. I, at this stage, it's, it's a report and I, I see no reason at all not to. I certainly have, have agents and community leaders who are working hard on so many worthwhile activities in our communities. Particularly right now, I mean, our volunteer groups and our volunteerism is challenged significantly during COVID-19. We're saying stay home. We're saying enjoy your backyard. We're saying all these things. Yeah, can we, can we count on the weather cooperating all the time? No, we can't. But those, we do have periods where it would be so incredibly enjoyed and utilized in the community in, in, at, at certain times that we can't predict it. So we don't know what's going to happen the following year. But we do know is that there's a lot of passionate people who are out there who want to, to be part of this. And it's not us saying we have to send our staff out to do it. It's us allowing an opportunity for our, our volunteers and our community to be vital. And, and I love the idea of the report because I'm hopeful that it would include if there is, if there is a challenge for HRM to provide the insurance through it, I, I'm hopeful that they would, might come across some opportunities that might be out there around insurance. There, it's hard for community groups to get, dig, dig hard and find alternatives to what they have in the wish of insurance. And the municipality might just come across something in their research when they're, when they're doing this. If we, if they, if they have to come back and say, no, that potentially, no, this is not, not necessarily recommended. We obviously would make the decision either way. But to, to make sure they flag some options that communities could have, it would be a shame to go through all this effort and not position ourselves really to give, give the community details that they might not otherwise have available to them. Insurance is changing. Insurance is, is challenged as well. We've had significant changes even through the, the fidelity program that is an arms-length pool of insurers with the federal government that have changed significantly. And we've recently reversed some of that due to industry implications. So you never know, like this, I'm hopeful people will, those industries out there are going to see what we see, which is a unique, a unique time in life and in society with so many things at play. We need to support our communities and I, I like this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cuddle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to thank Counselor Morris as well for bringing this forward. I think it's a, a great idea. I'm just wondering if we could amend the motion to add community, like community amenities and facilities in general. You know, I think that we're looking at community rinks, but we know community groups do many other things like bike, bike tracks. I don't know, pickleball courts, skate parks, lawn bowls, horseshoes. I don't know if insurance is needed for all of those things when community organizations host events and activities. But I think Counselor Lovelace, I think you're, we're getting, I'm getting some feedback and I think it's because you're next to me there. Oh, sorry. I was just saying I'd second that. Oh, there we are. Thanks. That was just weird sensation in my head. Yeah, so I'm, yeah, because, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to just see this limited just to, to rinks. And, you know, I'd like to see it as, as broad as possible and supporting those community organizations and all the great things that they do. All right. Thank you for the second.
On that, we don't normally amend requests for staff reports. I, I think we could, John, but it would take longer, obviously, I think. Somebody just give me Jacques, maybe. Can you just give me some advi- advice on that?
If the mover and the second are agree, it's a friendly amendment, Mayor. Yes, it is a bigger piece, but fundamentally it comes down to the ability to ensure or provide other support, whether, whether it's access to an insurer or, or funding.
So just let's get some wording around that then, Counselor Cuddle.
I would like to propose that we amend the motion for council to consider to include community amenities and facilities.
Yeah, I'll post it in the chat in just two seconds.
Okay, so we're on the amendment. Counselor Cuddle, you're okay for now on the amendment?
Yes.
On the amendment, I have Counselor Austin.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know that I can support the amendment just because of the, you know, what, what's the saying that we sometimes go to over here about perfect being the enemy of good? And this isn't to say that I wouldn't support other, other insurance asks, but, you know, kind of a general sort of fishing into the whole swath of, you know, all community groups out there in terms of what different insurance needs are speculatively is. You know, I, I, I think we've identified that there is a specific issue that community groups are facing with rinks. I'd want a little bit more certainty as to where else is going, where else we'd be going with this because the, the niceness about having a, a narrow look at rinks is that it's actually something that can be brought back to us in, you know, in not a huge order of, of things. So I, I'm not entirely sold on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lovelace on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this discussion. I just want to, I just want to be really clear that, you know, some community groups with community rinks on non-HRM-owned land are under the insurance program currently. And so, you know, I, I'm, I'm a little confused as to why other community groups would not be under that same program. So the Bootleers Point Rink is very fortunate to have a community-run and operated rink. It's not on HRM land, but they do have the benefit of the HRM insurance program. And so, but what I do see also is that the Estabrook Center is not on HRM land and does not benefit from the HRM insurance program. So whereas other community halls do. So I think that there's just, maybe we're mixing apples with oranges here. And I take your point, Counselor Austin. It's easy to be very specific and, and move ahead quickly with this one item. But I'm, I guess I'm, I'm wondering why one, you know, community group can't set up a rink and have a community rink, you know, in one part of HRM, but then another community group can. So that just seems a little bit, you know, as inequity as far as, or confusion why not everyone can benefit from the same municipal insurance program. Thank you.
Counselor Austin, is this the amendment you want to speak again or?
Just very, very quickly. I mean, I think the original motion is, is pretty broad. I mean, there's nothing in it that says it's specific to HRM land. The original motion is just support for community rinks. So, you know, maybe that looks like HRM extending insurance on our, at our facilities. Maybe it looks like grants at other places. My, my just concern about the amendment, like, I mean, I think the original motion is broad. It is limited to rinks. But my concern about the amendment would be just like, you know, if we try and imagine every kind of recreational situation out there that might involve a community group doing something in the community that might involve insurance, that's an awfully broad thing to be looking at. If we want to, if we want to do a broad look, well, I mean, I guess that, that, that's up to council. But I think that's taking this away from the very narrow, specific problem that we're looking at into a more general sort of staff report type exercise. And, you know, I, I, I could probably be argued either way on it honestly at this point. But I, I'm more inclined towards, towards actually addressing the place that we know there's an issue rather than going on a big fishing exercise. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to vote on the amendment then, colleagues, which is in the chat line. We ready for the vote?
Beginning with District One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
This is the amendment, colleagues, just to be clear.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yep. Voting in favor still for the amendment.
District Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
To the amendment? Um, I, to the amendment, I'm not, I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Five, Counselor Austin.
Against.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
Against the amendment.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
Against.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Nay.
Ten, Counselor Morris.
Voting against the amendment.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
For the motion? Amendment?
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
Voting against the motion or amendment, sorry.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting in favor of the amendment.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting against the amendment.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
Against the amendment.
Deputy Mayor Oatit.
Voting yes.
Mayor Savage.
Against.
I have that as seven for, ten against the amendment.
Okay, the amendment is defeated. We're back on the main motion. Counselor Oatit, I think.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Just for, just a little bit of very briefly history lesson for our new colleagues here. First of all, I'm going to support this main, this main motion and this staff report. But back a number of years ago now, when the Canada Games were here and we built the oval and we decided to keep the oval. And one of the reasons why we decided to keep the oval was how difficult it was to now, because of our changing climate and costs and effort, et cetera, to have a, to have all these community rinks. The plan had been originally to have some of the chillers used on the common for the main oval and then have some of them out in the communities. One could have gone perhaps to that Frittersack Falls, Bryfield, whatever. But it turned out we ended up needing all the chillers just to try and keep the ice in reasonable condition for the short season that we have at the, at the common for the oval. And another thing we did in recognition was we brought forward and we continue to do and support a lot of free public skates at our rinks because again, it is difficult to do the public, to the public outdoor rinks. Certainly, I just wanted to set the expectations a little bit and the report will deal with this, but more and more municipalities are having trouble getting insurance. More and more municipalities have seen their insurances go anywhere from 40% increases up to 1,000%, I think, depending on, you know, transit and, and issues and accidents and whatnot. So it's going to be, we're, we're going to have to be very careful before we add too much more to our insurance, I think, as well as, you know, to keep it affordable. And of course, our deductible is $100,000, as some of you may know. So while it appears to be wonderful, $100,000 deductible has its challenges as well. So anyway, I will support this because I think we perhaps need a session on insurance as well. We recently had this at the library board and it was very helpful to us. And I think maybe council could, could benefit from this presentation as well. So we'll support it, but just wanted to give a little bit of background on what we've tried to do instead of outdoor community rinks and of course, the challenges with our insurance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Mason, I see your hand. I don't see you in the chat. Are you looking to speak to this?
That's an error, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Okay, well, just wave back at you. Counselor Russ. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Austin, were you speaking again on the main motion or you just were on the amendment?
That was on the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think Counselor Russell on the main motion.
Thank you very much. I have listened to all of this and, and I'm still not going to be able to support this for the reasons that I've outlined. Part of it is because we don't have standards that community rinks would be expected to meet if they are to be insured. If what comes back from the report, I'm, I'm sure. If what comes back from the report, I'm, I'm sure it's going to pass. I'm not going to be able to support it, but I'm sure it's going to pass. And I would hope that what comes back will be some degree of standards that we would hope to see our community rinks be held to in order for them to be able to be insured. Leaving them, you don't often ensure a thing without setting the parameters of what that thing is. And if we just say community rinks, it could be pretty much anything. So I would simply hope to see something defining what they need to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else unless I've missed somebody in the chat line. We ready for the question on the main motion unamended? So it wasn't amended? Ready for the question, main motion?
Question.
Beginning with District Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Uh, yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
Voting in favor of the motion.
District thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
Against the motion.
Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Voting yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion, the motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Morris and colleagues. We'll go to 11.5.2. Counselor Mancini, Special Events Advisory Committee Chair, Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Put the following motion on the floor that the Regional Council requests amendment to the Market Levy Administrative Order 2014-020-GOV to allow for a counselor who does not sit on the Audit and Finance Standing Committee to chair the Special Events Advisory Committee. So moved.
The second for that?
Seconded Lovelace.
Seconded by Counselor Lovelace, Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Counselor Lovelace. So this is interesting, colleagues. And for those of you that are, are newer colleagues, may not even be aware of what the Special Events Advisor Committee is. We refer to it as CAC. As you may know, that the hotels collect a levy from every guest and that goes into a fund. And that fund is then organized and controlled by the municipality. But we have this committee, CAC, that receives presentations on events. And we consider, they would ask for funding and we take the funding from this fund. The, and it's a very important event. And now unfortunately, this year, the fund's not going to be that great because hotels haven't had a lot of guests. But hopefully when we get back to whatever the new normal is, that fund will grow like it has in the past. My challenge is, I, since I've been on council, I've sat on this, this committee. And the chair of that committee has always been a former councillor, Steve Adams. And Steve Adams, as we all know, retired before the last election. And then I was been sitting the last three or four years as the vice chair. And then I was surprised to find out that the chair of CAC was appointed by the Finance and Audit Committee, which makes absolutely no sense whatsoever to have another committee appoint a chair of a different committee where that person coming in may not have any knowledge of what this committee is all about. So in this, in this case, as Counselor Russell, this is my reflection on Counselor Russell. He was appointed for, like I said, upset on game to help, as he always is. But this doesn't make any sense to appoint a chair to a committee that has no knowledge of the committee, how it works, the players of the committee. And so I'm looking for a change in this that, you know, I'm fine with Audit and Finance appointing a member, but the chair really should come from within. Now, Mr. Mayor, I believe that it may help if I request this as a staff report. Whatever its staff could speak to that.
Yeah, so just when I saw this, I spoke with Counselor Mancini about our, our, our policy is to ask for staff reports. So, because this is something that could come back relatively quickly, I would ask our CIO or, or John?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Jacques Bay, CIO. I'm sure we could come back within probably a month or so, next month.
Okay.
So I add, yeah, I add a staff report to, to that if the seconder, Counselor Lovelace, is okay with that. I'm fine with that, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So it's for a staff report. Thank you, Counselor Mancini. Anything else on that?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cleary.
Actually, I'm good, Mr. Mayor. My comment and question was just around the idea of a staff report, but that's been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the question, colleagues?
Any questions?
Beginning with District Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
In favor of the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Thank you.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion. Thank you, Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, colleagues.
Colleagues, the next item is an in-camera item. I wonder if there's any appetite, Deputy Mayor, you indicated you might want to move, test council on that one?
Sorry, I thought we were going to added items and I went, got ahead of myself there. I'm happy to put this on the table, Mr. Mayor. That it's a confidential report pertaining to a labor issue and that I move that Halifax Regional Council, one, adopt the recommendations as outlined in the private and confidential staff report dated March 12th, 2021. And two, direct the private and confidential staff report dated March 12th, 2020 to be maintained private confidential. So moved.
Second, Counselor Mason.
Seconded by Counselor Mason. We ready for the question on that, colleagues?
Question.
Let's go to the vote.
Beginning with District Four, Counselor Purdy.
Voting in favor.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor of the motion.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
In favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counselor Kent, Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Mayor Savage.
In favor, so 13.1 carries without going in camera. We have an added item, colleagues. 14.1 is proposed amendments to administrative order respecting COVID.
Move that, Mayor.
Please, go ahead, Count, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I move that Halifax Regional Council adopt the amendments to Administrative Order 2020-009-ADM, the COVID-19 Administrative Order, as set out in Attachment Two of the staff report dated January 19th, 2021. So moved. And hopefully someday this won't be required and we'll all be back in the same room. But in the meantime, we have to move, move this forward.
Seconded by Counselor Russell.
Seconded by Counselor Russell. Ready for the question on that, colleagues?
Question.
Question.
Beginning with District Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
In favor.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yay.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
Yes.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
Voting in favor.
And Mayor Savage.
Favor. Colleagues, we will go to notices of motion. Counselor Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two notices of motion. First is take notice that at a future meeting of Halifax Regional Council, I intend to propose amendments for approval to, for approval to administer, that should read, sorry, amendments to Administrative Order 2015-005-GOV, the citing of a telecommunications antenna administrative order, the purpose of which is to allow an extension of one year to the existing letters of concurrence, including the timing requirements for applicants to request extensions and stipulations where an extension could not be granted. Second notice of motion is take notice that at the next regular meeting of Halifax Regional Council to be held on April 6th, 2021, I intend to move amendments to Administrative Order 15, the License Permit and Processing Fees Administrative Order, the purpose of which is to waive the fees for sidewalk cafes for the 2021 cafe season. Thank you.
Amen. Counselor Smith.
Sorry, I couldn't take, pick myself up off mute. So I, I have to resend my notice because I didn't put take notice at the next meeting. So note that it will be take notice at the next meeting that are quick staff report that will look at developing collaborative process that will ultimately create an Africville visioning process. Africville visioning process should include, but will not be limited to, one, determining, determine a cooperative working partnership between HRM and community partners in organizations that are working on behalf of the interest of descendants. Two, engage with other organizations, businesses, businesses and levels of government whose interests could potentially impact Africville land and/or Africville descendants to determine how they can support the Africville visioning process and its outcomes. Three, reviewing the 2010 Africville agreement and determining which commitments have been met, where further action is required and whether the past commitments address the current desires of the community. Four, identifying all municipal-led partner projects, initiatives that have a direct impact on land at Africville, land surrounding Africville and its users, current and future to determine the full effect they have, will have on Africville land. Five, developing a comprehensive, co-facilitated public engagement process in partnership with Africville descendants, Africville-focused organizations and community partners that will inform the outcomes of the visioning process. Six, revisiting the 2003 Main Street Master Plan and work with partners to collaborate to reimagine the master plan that would include the land specifically dedicated to descendants of Africville and/or uses that would be supported by descendants, community members or organizations to broadly represent the interest of Africville descendants. And seven, examine the possibility of using the Africville visioning process to address the ongoing class action court proceedings against HRM and working with claimants and descendants to address their concerns outside of the court system.
Thank you. Counselor Cleary.
Thank you. Take notice that at a future meeting of Halifax Regional Council, I intend to propose amendments for approval to Administrative Order 12, respecting the appointment of the traffic authority, the purpose of which is to establish a standardized procedure for the appointment of the traffic authority.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Take notice that at the next regular regional council meeting to be held on Tuesday, the 6th of April, 2021, I propose to request a staff, a staff report that assesses the feasibility of expanding the current rainbow crosswalk program using the same design as the current rainbow crosswalks to include the painting of Pan-African colors on existing sidewalks in historic African Nova Scotia communities.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Is anybody got any good jokes or anything that they want to tell at this point in time? I think we are done. Is it anybody's birthday? Anybody want to, any anniversaries? No. I think that's it. I will, our next meeting, of course, is budget tomorrow with Counselor Russell in the chair. And then next Wednesday as well, council back in two weeks. I will accept a motion from Counselor Purdy to adjourn if she is so inclined.
I am. I'm, we adjourn this meeting.
We are adjourned, colleagues. Thank you for zooming with us, if you were zooming us from, from outside. And thank you to staff for making it easy. And to all of